The September meeting of the Suffolk Planning Commission will not come to order. I will call on Commissioner Edwards for the invocation.
Let us pray. O wise and most gracious heavenly Father, to give a very good and perfect gift, Lord, we thank you that we are able to take a moment out of our day, Lord God, to just say thank you for all your many blessings. God, we desire that our souls were desired you like the grass desires rain. And Lord, we desire so you would shower us with your wisdom, your knowledge, and your love. Lord, help us reason together. And Lord, open up our ears and our eyes of understanding so we can make the right decisions for the city of Suffolk and its citizens. Lord, let us come together and work together and walk together so we can take our city to the level that it needs to be. Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we bless you. In your precious name we do pray. Amen.
Mr. Wyman, will you call the roll please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Here.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Hicks?
Vice Chairman Staler?
Here.
And Chairman Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you for that. Are there any corrections to the minutes from the August meeting? None, they were staying as approved as printed. This afternoon, we have one item for public hearings. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. The first item we have on our agenda today is conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-012, Deputy CSB Tidewater House. Ms. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-012, Western Tidewater Community Services Board, Tidewater House, submitted by Mark Ricketts, P E L S, with A E S Consulting Engineers, agent for Western Tidewater Community Services Board, applicant on behalf of the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Franklin, property owners. In accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance II, grant the conditional use permit to amend the previously approved conditional use permit to expand the building area on property located at 5268 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map 9 parcel 58. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, Zoned B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Rural Conservation Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2023-012. Staff Planner Shannon Wolf will present the staff's report.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. As mentioned, this conditional use permit request is to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation center as a resident use on property located at 5268 Godwin Boulevard at the existing Western Tidewater Community Services Board facility, also known as the Tidewater House. The property is located in the Rural Conservation Use District and is located in the Chukatuck Voting Borough. The property is Zoned B2 and is in the Special Corridor Overlay District. To the north is Dominion Energy Services, Zoned B2, General Commercial. To the southeast and west are single-family dwellings, fields, and forested lands zoned rural estate. The existing Tidewater House currently provides both inpatient and outpatient counseling and mental health services. Specifically, the current conditional use permit was approved to allow the Tidewater House to accommodate a crisis-receiving center and short-term residential crisis stabilization unit for adults 18 years and older. The current request is to amend the previously approved conditional use permit in order to expand the first floor by 4,800 square feet, as shown shaded in green. The expansion will house an activity center, music room, art room, physical fitness center, and an aerobic fitness center to be used by all clients along with associated offices for staff. This is not to increase the number of beds previously approved for the short-term crisis stabilization, it is only to provide additional amenities. Therefore, staff believes, given the existing and future infrastructure for the proposed use and location, it is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. All other departments have reviewed this request and have no concerns for this request. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2023-012 with the conditions stated in staff's report. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Mark Ricketts. I'm the agent for the Western Community Services Board and represent the applicant in this particular application. As Ms. Wolf stated, it is simply an expansion of the existing facility to provide more room in order to provide the services that are already underway at that facility. We've read through the report, and the six conditions are acceptable as presented. We're here to answer any questions that you may have. I believe I also have the architect, Richard Corner, Richard, yes, sir, absolutely, Richard Corner, who can answer any other questions that you may have, will stand by for anything that you may want to ask us.
Thanks, Mark.
Great, absolutely.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry, I was a couple of minutes behind. My name is Richard Corner. I'm the architect. We're working with A E S and Mark Ricketts on the Tidewater House project, and the staff assembled, I'm guessing, all the documents that we furnished to you all, plans, site plans, there were some renderings included. If you have any questions, we'd be welcome to answer them.
We will save the question till when we close the public hearing.
I would like to add, on behalf of the Western Tidewater Services Board, this is a very important project to them. There has been a shift in their mission. They obtained their conditional use permit for the residential unit back in October of 2021. This project will actually construct that component. This particular action is driven by the expansion of the facility, which was not contemplated back in 2021. Back then, it was just an alteration. Now, it's an alteration and expansion. I thought I ought to explain that subtle point. But this mission, this residential unit mission, for 16 beds for up to 15-day stay, is very important to their mission to suit crisis care. It's a gap in their mission today. There's a strong driving need within the community to house people for this period of time, to give them behavioral and psychological counseling and support. So, on that note, I'll shut up and sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Is anyone else speaking in favor of this request? Here or none? Is there anyone in opposition to this request? Here or none? I think I will close the public hearing at this point. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Chair, I move approval of CUP 2023-012 with the seven conditions.
Seven or six?
Six.
Motion for approval with six conditions?
Six.
Got the second from Ms. Eberwine. Any discussion of the motion?
I would just like to add, I think it's a wonderful thing that they're expanding this. It's definitely a big need in our community, and it's not necessarily what we're here to be in support of, but I'm really glad it's happening.
Other comments? Ms. Wyman, will you call the roll please? Call for the vote, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Rickett. Do you have this body's approval, and it will go to City Council on October 18th for that consideration. Thank you. That closed the public hearings for today. Do we have any old business, Mr. Eberwine? I don't think we have anything.
No, sir.
Pending? Okay. So, we're moved to the new business. Under the new business, the staff report for significant land use items, Ms. Wyman?
Yes, sir. As you all may recall, about six, seven months ago, we presented kind of a policy update as it relates to significant land use items that the city receives. We kind of called that the hundreds rule. If a development is going to exceed 100 units total, if it is a property of 100 acres or greater in size, or if it consists of 100,000 square feet of commercial uses, we are going to present that to you all a month in advance to the public hearing, to allow you all to get familiar with it, prior to being hit relatively cold with this information for public hearing consideration. So, it's been a while since we've had some of these come before you, but we have three that we would like to provide you a brief overview with today. The first two, I'm going to let the planners, who are in charge of those, provide you with those overviews. The last one is kind of a city-initiated project. I'll provide you with a brief overview, and we have our deputy city manager here as well, who will provide you with some of the more intricate details of that application. But the first one is the Mosaic at the Riverfront. Joshua Bateman is the planner on that. Josh, if you could walk us through that?
Good afternoon. I'm Josh Bateman, the principal planner for the City Planning Department, and the first significant land use item that I'll be doing a brief summary on today is the Mosaic at the Riverfront, which is being pursued by the owner of that property as a continuation of the various riverfront projects that have been completed in the past. This request is to rezone property located within the Bridgeway Commerce Park from Office Institutional, O I, to Residential Urban 18 Zoning District. The subject property is located within the Northern Growth Area, Mixed Use Core District, and is within the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough. The property is bordered by the Bridgeport Commerce Park, immediately to the north. To the west is the Gables at the Riverfront, which is a single-family subdivision zoned RU Residential Urban. To the south is the Rivergate at the Riverfront, which is a single-family subdivision zoned RU 12 that you can see in the map there. And to the east are professional office buildings that front on Harborview Boulevard within the Harborview Project or the Harborview Development. As you can see from this GIS map of the property, it is somewhat uniquely shaped. It's kind of a regular parcel there where it fronts on Bridgeway Drive, but there's about an 80-foot strip that runs more or less north to south, back towards Park Avenue, and then it turns abruptly to the southeast along Park Avenue until it reaches College Drive. So, that's the way the property was platted when it was subdivided in 2007. I think the parcel, the survey here shows that a little bit more clearly, and you can also see that there are some small pockets of isolated wetlands on the part of the property that fronts on Bridgeway Drive. In terms of the reasons for seeking the rezoning, the applicant has created a statement to this effect. Everything beyond Harborview Boulevard on Bridgeway Drive has previously been rezoned to residential for various subdivisions associated with the riverfront development. The parcel directly across the street, for instance, across Bridgeway Drive from this parcel, was rezoned in 2018 for 70 units, I believe it was. So, this is kind of like an infill project in that this is the last remaining O I-zoned property on this side of Harborview Boulevard that's not directly fronting on Harborview Boulevard, that remains zoned O I. So, according to the applicant's statement, it would not make sense, or it would not be appropriate, to develop corporate or professional offices directly across a residential street from a single-family residential subdivision. The proposed multifamily use in their statement is a better transition from those single-family uses to the industrial zoning and the warehouses that are directly behind. And the location map, this is an example, a photograph of what they intend to build there, not exactly what they intend to build, I'm sure they'll take some, you know, deviate from that a little bit when their architect gets a hold of it, but that's essentially what they're looking to do, four-story apartment buildings. And the terms of the proffer statement, so the applicant is proposing a maximum of 192 multifamily dwelling uses in a condominium form of ownership, so each unit will be owner-occupied, and the common areas, the common area improvements like the active recreational facilities, and those things will be managed by a condominium owners' association. The applicant is proffering the construction of a pedestrian trail, or sidewalk, both down the 80-foot strip towards Park Avenue, and then along the 30-foot strip that they own adjacent to Park Avenue, back to the roundabout on College Drive and Harborview Boulevard, to provide that pedestrian access, because what's over there is the point at Harborview and that new commercial mixed-use development that's going in over there. So, that will allow for this multifamily use to be tied back, from a pedestrian standpoint, for the use by pedestrians and residents of the community, to that commercial area, which is a desirable thing generally. The applicant is proffering the construction of that trail, and this exhibit here showing the larger parcel shows how they're doing that. In terms of how they're developing the bulk of the parcel, this would be arranged in eight multifamily buildings, is what they're proposing right now. The 192 units maximum yields a total density of 16.3 dwelling units per acre, so it is within the cap of the RU 18 District, which limits the development of property to 18 dwelling units per acre maximum density. The applicant has proffered that all units will be age-restricted, consisting of, quote, "housing for older persons," as that term is defined in the Virginia Fair Housing Law, and there was a wetland delineation performed previously that confirmed these small areas of isolated wetlands that will be impacted by the construction of the community. And then there's some additional wetlands along the western boundary of the property that would be protected within the wooded, the existing wooded area there.
All right. The second item that we wanted to bring before you all today, we'll probably be familiar to some of you at least. This is a project off of Turlington Road, referred to as Turlington Woods. We had a similar rezoning application submitted for your consideration around three years ago, and a new developer is now pursuing the site, wishing to rezone it to R L M. Brittany Collier, our current planning manager, will present you with an overview of this project.
Thank you. As Kevin had stated, this is going to be a brief summary for conditional rezoning requests for Turlington Road Associates. This was submitted by Brian Lane, Parish Lane Design Group, applicant on behalf of Turlington Road Associates, LLC, and Lacy Gross Property Owners. This request is to rezone the property from Agricultural Zoning District to R L M, Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District, conditional, for the purpose of developing single-family detached cluster development. The property up for discussion is located in the Suburban Use District in the Central Growth Area. The subject properties are located at 539 Turlington Road and consist of tax parcel 43*19 and tax parcel 43*19P*1. Parcel 43*19 is currently zoned agricultural. The second parcel, subject to the conditional rezoning request, 43*19P*1, is presently zoned R L M, Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. To the north and west of the parcel are detached single-family homes, fields, and forested lands zoned agricultural. To the east are single-family detached homes zoned R L M, Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District, and to the south are single-family detached homes, fields, and forested lands zoned R L M and agricultural. As Kevin had stated, previously in 2018, the larger parcel, tax parcel 43*19, was subject to a conditional rezoning request, R Z N 2018-09, to rezone the property to R L M for the purpose of developing a cluster development of 101 single-family dwelling units. This request was denied by City Council. The smaller parcel, tax parcel 43*19P*1, was not a part of the previous rezoning application and is now included as a part of this request. The applicant proposes to conditionally rezone approximately 81 acres of the property from agricultural to R L M, zoning district conditional. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow for the development of a cluster subdivision consisting of a maximum of 113 single-family detached dwelling units. Wetlands were found to be located along the southern and northern portions of the parcel and found to extend down the center of the parcel as well, occupying approximately 31.5 acres of the site, which reduces the potential number of units that could be realized. After subtracting out the total amount of critical area, the parcel is left with approximately 48 acres of developable area. Therefore, the proposed net density for this development would be 2.27 units per acre. The applicant has voluntarily proffered six conditions in support, I'm sorry, three conditions, in support of this rezoning request, which are provided in detail on this slide. The first proffer outlines the total cash contribution for school impacts. The second proffer limits the development to a maximum of 113 single-family detached cluster development. And lastly, the third proffer pertains to traffic improvements that shall be done in accordance with the approved TIA. That concludes my summary for this.
All right. Lastly, we have a significant land use item for a homeless shelter proposed along Pruden Boulevard. This is a city-initiated project and is in response to some homelessness funding that the Western Tidewater Region received to the tune of about $1.4 million. Presently, this property is Zoned B2, and within the B2 District, CUP is necessary to construct a temporary shelter for homeless persons. Presently, this is the location of the Regal Inn, so it does operate as a hotel. From the city's perspective, they look to convert it, really minimal construction or impacts would be required to convert it from its current hotel use to a homeless shelter. But we would envision this being managed by a non-governmental entity, and security measures would be taken to assist in the control of access to the site, and complemented by some cameras around the perimeter of the building, the main office. Additionally, they would offer some life and job skill training onsite, residential vetting and intake and counseling services. We have our deputy city manager, Kevin Hughes, here, who can elaborate on the details as it relates to this project.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. This is not 100 acres, this is not 100 units. However, we found it significant, and we want to take advantage of this opportunity to speak to yourselves and the community as often as we can. As Mr. Wyman mentioned, we were able to receive some funding, a little over $1.4 million, for the Western Tidewater Region to work and prevent homelessness and provide shelter. This came out of the pandemic, some funding that came out of HUD. So, we worked with our neighbors to, excuse me, to the west to identify a site. We all were in agreement that Suffolk would be the host location. Performing a pretty extensive site search, we were able to identify what is currently operating as the Regal Inn on Pruden Boulevard. We see this as a great location to set up a temporary homeless shelter, so think 30 days, thereabouts, from a time period, to bring folks in that are currently experiencing homelessness, provide the opportunity to have resources in place, consistency being the significant, I think, theme here. Work on identifying IDs, identification, hopefully opportunities for job sources, life assistance, things of that nature, give them an opportunity to stand up and hopefully take a step forward. Homelessness is extremely complicated. Finding a solution doesn't necessarily exist. What we have in place, we know we are experiencing homelessness in the Western Tidewater area in Suffolk, but we don't necessarily have a consistent opportunity for it. And so, we think this is a great opportunity in Suffolk, in the Western Tidewater area, to use this funding and put this operation in place. As Mr. Wyman mentioned, this would be a purchase by the city and the consortium, and then we would look to identify a third party to assist us in operating it. We've been working very closely with the City of Norfolk and built a very strong relationship. They similarly went through a similar-type program where they identified and purchased a hotel off of Tidewater Drive that they've set up for a temporary shelter and have a really good program in place. They've had a lot of lessons learned over about a two, three-year period, and so we have a very intimate relationship with them, where we're talking about some of their budgets and concerns and things of that nature. And so, we think working within their model is something that we can be successful with, but also bringing resources to the forefront to assist on this issue that we want to address. And look forward to working with you through this CUP process. Thank you.
That concludes the significant land use items we have.
Well, thanks, staff, for their presentation, and Assistant City Manager, Mr. Hughes, for your presentation also. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the appointment to the fiscal year 2025-2034 Capital Improvement Plan Subcommittee, and I've discussed with two members on the commission, and Commissioner Bauer, and Commissioner Hicks has agreed to work with that committee to bring us a budget, I think, probably in December. I want to thank you for that appointment. And next item would be the status report, Mr. Wyman, on the City Council meeting of August 16th.
Yes, sir. There were four public hearings at the August 16th City Council meeting, the first being a rezoning request that you all are quite familiar with, the Lake Kilby Shores, which was a request to change the zoning from RE, Rural Estate, to RM for property located along Lake Kilby Road. This was approved by City Council with the proffers submitted by the applicant. Additionally, we presented an ordinance text amendment as it relates to electronic message board signs in the city to be allowed for institutional uses throughout the city. That was approved by City Council. And then finally, we had an ordinance text amendment associated with the Suffolk Historic District Guidelines that was approved by City Council, as were the guidelines themselves. So, it was a pretty busy meeting, but we're excited to get those historic district guidelines across the finish line.
Next item is the status report, preliminary plat approval.
Yes, sir. We had one preliminary subdivision approved last month that is for a property located along Bennett's pasture road, referred to as the Nelms Farm. This property is currently zoned R L M, that's our Residential Low Medium Density District, and it consists of almost 52 developable acres. They are proposing a development on the site that will consist of 2.3 units per acre that would yield 115 detached, single-family residential lots. So, with the approval of this preliminary plat, it paves the way for submittal of an engineering plan and construction plan for the subdivision along Bennett's pasture road there.
Commissioners, any comments? We don't want no motion, just comments.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to state that I'm so happy that the city is looking into the into the homeless situation, and we're going to be coming up with a solution for some of these unfortunate folks. I would urge you, if you didn't have the chance, to review the information that was included today from the planning council. They have some great information dealing with the homeless issue, and will give you some great background into the situation that is here. So, thank you very much.
Comments? Hearing none? Meeting standard adjourned.